... on the news journals website and I know eventually we'll have it posted on our website as well but are on our social media channels so make sure that you check that out that's a good synopsis of a lot of different things going on but we're here to talk about the things that you care about and you're concerned about here in District 5 and you got a great council member here that certainly keeps her finger on the pulse of what's going on with you guys and I know does an awesome job of relaying that to us and we do the best. What I'll do, I'm gonna pass it over to Councilwoman Broughton for an introduction but I would just would like you to know that if you have a question, we're gonna start with questions first. We, I've got one speaker form, Dominique where are the, where are the forms? Are they at this back table?
Right here.
Yeah, so right down at the back table if you don't mind filling one of those out for me and then we'll get to those questions first and then if we have some extra time we'll go through some other issues that we may not have gotten a question about here in District 5. So I'll pass it over to Councilwoman Broughton. Thank you guys for being here.
Good evening everybody. My name is Tenny I.D. Broughton and I represent you the City Council of District 5. Actually, none of you voted for me.
Well, I did.
Well, yeah, those of you who were in the east side, right, because you were redistricted to District 5. So everybody else was in Heights, you know, different parts. I hope you voted for me but even if you didn't, I love you anyway and I hope I earned your vote for next time. But tonight, we're gonna be discussing some community issues and just whatever's on your mind or what's on your heart. But before that, I would like to recognize those who came before me particularly Dr. Marion Williams who all, who all, I'm sure that you all know and I was looking at a video of us at the council meeting, the council town hall last year when we were at the Chappy James Museum and he did so much to promote that and to sit on different boards and also so did this maggot change, you know, so as we say goodbye to both of them this week, I would like to just recognize that those who came before us made it possible for us to be here today. There are a few things, the way this is set up and of course with new mayor Reeves, he's really about being interactive and you have taken these moments to talk with him about all of your questions and I have been able to talk to him about things that I hear from you all so I would hope that you would take this opportunity to tell him the same things that you've been telling me. So now, what I'm saying to you is I have him here right with me so you have to say it to him while we are here. I'm not gonna take too much time because he has a list I see but I will say that if there is anything that I might, that you may have emailed me about and I didn't email you about, like your issue, then bring it up tonight, please. Okay? All right, I'll pass it to whoever I need to pass it to.
All right, thank you. And also, I know it happens, it really happens in every one of these, we may start getting an update on something and if you want, obviously feel free to hop up and, you know, something sparks a question for you, just helps us make sure that we keep everything in order having these speaker forms that everybody, you know, has their turn to ask anything. And, what's that, and, yeah, we also have District 3 Commissioner, your county commissioner, Lumen May, over here. So if it's a hard, let's see what he can do, you know, we're just a city, he's the county, you know. So, anyway, I wanna tell you, just so you guys know, in case you don't, in case you don't get to go to any other or have not been to ones outside the district, this is an outlier in the fact that Councilwoman Broughton does a great job of being very intentional to make this valuable for you guys. This is my first, we've got bags from Baptist Hospital and on the chairs, then we've got FPL on the back and that's, we've got all sorts of resources around here and that is not the norm. That is because she cares very much about making this valuable for you. And so, a thank you to her and a thank you to everybody that took her up, took us up on that invite to make this as beneficial as possible. So I'd certainly wanna give her and everyone here credit on that. So, last thing we'll do and then I'll jump into questions when we have them. I've got, I know I've got the first one up here, she's got some more, is I would like to introduce you to everybody who, you know, makes the city go. And one change that we made when we started doing these town halls is a lot of times it would be the mayor or the mayor and just the council person up here. But I think in my mind, I'm trying to send a different message that truly that who makes these things go are some of the people that are up here who work their tail off to make the city the best that it can be. And so, in case there's a question that comes up and there's, you need some more specifics, we've got people from many pertinent departments here spending their evening with you as well to be able to answer any questions that you have. So again, as a reminder, if we get through these questions, what we'll do is I'll typically, especially with public safety like police and fire and some other things unique to your district, we will happily go through that and have our department heads go through that. So what we'll do is, where's the other micro, okay, great, Victoria's already ready. So we'll start to my left, your right, down here and we'll give you some introductions and then we'll jump into questions.
Good evening everyone. I'm Victoria DeAngelo. I'm with the city's Community Redevelopment Agency. I'm the division manager for the CRA. I know certainly, I know some of your faces for those that I don't know, I'd be happy to meet you. We're, we serve a part of District 5 here. So this is within our east side CRA and that is kind of split between two districts. I find that is easier.
Hi, I'm Sheri Morris. I'm the Development Services Department Director. That department consists of three divisions. The CRA, as Victoria just described, Inspection Services, which is building inspections essentially, and the Planning and Zoning Division.
Good evening, Lisa Deed, working in 311, Director.
Here to three, so your Housing Department.
Fred Quinshaw, Sanitation Director.
Amy Tudo, Public Works and Facilities Director.
David Forte, one of the two deputy city administrators.
I'm Karen Fidler. I'm the city administrator.
Amy Miller, I'm the other deputy city administrator. The departments that report under me are your airport, your parking department, Parks and Recreation, and Pensacola Energy, the local natural gas utility.
I'm Jenny Crainer. I serve as your Fire Chief.
I'm Eric Randall, Service of Police Chief.
Ben Heistain, Parks and Recreation Director, just started this week.
Erica Gran Cagnolo, Economic Development Director.
All right, thank you. That's code word for be easy on Ben. He's only been here a week. We'll try, we'll cover some ground for him while he gets acclimated. So, all right, let's jump into questions. First up is David Cofflin. If you don't mind, yeah, or we can break the mic to you, either way.
Let me come right here.
There you go.
Do we have the extra microphone?
There you go.
Don't it?
Yep.
It's coming your way.
If you'll forgive me, folks, I'm a longtime school teacher and creator so I'm gonna give some people...
See, he probably hit the button on accident.
May I?
Should turn green.
And I didn't break it.
No.
Oh, you have another guest. You have another guest.
Oh, nice.
About that.
There we go.
David Cofflin. I live in Woodland Heights on Chadwick Street. I've been there about 10 years. I'm retired as an educator out of Vermont and I promised a long time ago never to shovel snow ever again and I love Pensacola. What I'd like to talk about is zoning and there's two photo or two handouts going around, one of which says, sorry, 517 Chadwick Street. Because I'm an educator, I kinda have a quiz and as we try to get these out here, the folks in front still see us now. If you look at 517 Chadwick Street, two pictures there and the question is, is that a residence? Any guesses?
Let's be honest, this one.
Take a look around. If those who are familiar with Chadwick Street, you've seen this house, it's been there, it's a house. He talked at the zoning board, that's a house. Within that structure, there is a very, very small run room for a bathroom, a kitchen and a living and a bedroom, bedroom, living room. Okay? So, then the next one down, if you look at it, is 621 Dipmart Street. This is an ad by the way, out of Google, which is, its label is Right Cell Storage Unit near Pensacola. This particular 621 Dipmart is right in my backyard. This one is owned by a local forestry business, the best way to say it, they park their equipment there and evidently they wanted to have some more money so they seem to be putting an ad out to try to rent their space to more equipment. It's interesting to hear the beavers go off at all times at night. So the question is, is, Woodland Heights is a residential neighborhood and a zoned residential and yet these two structures, which I happen to be fairly familiar with, they're all within like quarter mile of my house. They seem to pass the zoning regulation. I've talked to the zoning people and they tell me that it does indeed because there's a bedroom included and the plans say house. It's a house. And no offense, neither of these are houses. So, I guess, and the zoning people tell me this can happen anywhere within the city of Pensacola except the historic districts. So I think it's something we all need to pay attention to.
Okay, yeah, and I was gonna say, go ahead also with, and we'll address those, you know, you got a traffic calming thing here too. Go ahead and ask that and then we'll get you to respond.
Okay, well, traffic calming, I got picture, Woodland Heights is kind of an interesting neighborhood. It was developed in the late 50s in a period of time when automotive transportation was certainly coming into play a lot. You know, all of war veterans came back, they all got cars. You look at it and you notice there's four streets in Woodland Heights that go directly from Davis Highway to 9th Avenue. Okay? They are straight. If you look at the top four, you can see they're little drag strips is what they are. All right? And because most of the housing there has off-road parking, there's very few people park on the side of the street. So you get these wide highways that encourage speed. It is a neighborhood so the speed limit is 25 miles per hour. Okay? However, if you're there at the time people are going to work or people are going to back and forth for lunch, or certainly the worst time seems to be going home at, you know, 4:30, 5:30, somewhere in there. Traffic can approach 60 miles per hour down through there. And my comment was if you look at in Hennecia Street, you know, if you happen to live in South Town Apartments, you can walk to the YMCA without any trouble at all because they got a beautiful traffic calming situation. So, I'm not just saying for our neighborhood alone but I think Pensacola in general needs to address their speed limits and how that works.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, I'll let Sheri answer to the zoning question that you have. In terms of traffic calming, as your question is, I know, kind of more philosophical than one specific street, certainly those are things that we look at all the time, whether it's a stop sign, whether it's to put a speed table in. We just actually did put some speed tables in on Cross Street after many.
Please.
And now, and this is, I'll give one caveat to that.
And the speed bumps, you start talking about those, the neighborhood turns off.
So, I was gonna say, what ends up happening, the double edged sword of speed tables is we usually get a phone call where everyone's excited to get them in and then about in 24 hours, once they're in, the person who's out in front of the house at the speed table says, man, those things are loud. So, you know, when you try to solve one problem, you create another and that doesn't mean that there are places that where it does make sense and some that there aren't. So, I just always, these town halls like to discuss that because that's not always a clear cut unanimous solution. That being said, certainly, I understand what the plight that you're talking about is people being able to move through there but, you know.
During sanitation pickup day, right, because garbage tails line both sides of that street, traffic slows down.
Yeah.
So, sometimes...
Yeah, and so what you're talking about is traffic calming in general, which I am a fan of and really for pedestrian safety, for bike safety, and we built a lot of streets. The example I use a lot is A Street from basically Main to Garden, you know, you can land a 747 on. And what happens is, even though we use that for parking, what ends up happening is our brains tell us you can move faster. And that's, and Jefferson Street before that redesign between Garden and Chase was the same way. And even that now, people can go significantly slower than they were when they were trying to jump on I-110. So, I'm very much a believer in the philosophy of traffic calming. That also scares some people because they think that means going from four lanes to two lanes every time. It does not. But we always look for opportunities to have some of those calming measures and we're looking at those in downtown. And certainly when we find opportunities to do that, that, again philosophically, we're in support of, so.
One more comment, if you don't mind. I'm not blaming Tenny, I read the...
Many I did.
Okay. Now, if you talk to the city council, which you're asked to do, right, you get a form that basically says have 75% of your neighborhood sign off on this traffic study. And no one's gonna sign off on it because the next word says speed bumps. They don't want it. So the bottom line is, the system is broken and I'm hoping that this administration can fix it.
Well, I'll, I appreciate that. Well, I'll let Sheri speak to the zoning thing and I'll let Amy Tudo, our Public Works Director, she can speak a little bit more to the mechanism you're talking about.
Yes, sir. You know, there's, I'm not familiar specifically with these two but I'll look into it as soon as I get in the office in the morning and I'll get your contact information and have somebody follow up with you. Sometimes there, you know, as you said, I don't know if you spoke with in our office, there might have been plans submitted that indicated this, these were, you know, one or both of these were residential structures and there might not have been anything they've shown on their plans that showed that they would trigger a business occupancy, which is what the building, the inspections looks at. That's not to say what they're doing in practice might not be in violation of something and also this building has building occupancy. So we're looking at these specifically and I'll give you that information and we'll give you some clarification.
The other interesting thing about the Chadwick Street threat, if you look it up on property lookup, it's not there. There's something going on.
We're looking, we're looking to it.
I'll look at these addresses but, yeah, sometimes there are, unfortunately, there can be areas between zoning and building occupancy and what's actually taking place on a piece of property. But I'll look into both of these first thing in the morning and get back to you. I'll get your contact information before we go.
Thank you for coming out, Sheri.
Thank you. In terms of traffic calming in general, I will look into how the form states, you know, about if it's only traffic or speed tables. But in general, our philosophy, the team's philosophy, is they go out there and look at the roadway that is in question. We look at if there's any maintenance activities we can do, you know, low hanging fruit, whether there's signage, whether there's striping, or if there's something that we can do that's a non-physical alteration to the roadway. Those are things that we look at on an operational standpoint. If we, you know, do see those things, that's when we try to go ahead and handle those on the maintenance side. We do have that 75%, you know, request for citizens that are affected by any kind of change or a physical measure because as the mayor stated, you know, one person may want something but the rest of the roadway may, you know, the folks that live on the roadway may not want that physical change. So that's why we have that sort of threshold in terms of allowing the next step of doing the traffic studies. And then those will then tell us whether or not it does reach a level of something that, you know, the speeds going down the roadway are exceeding what the posted speed limit and then we do need to then look at doing something different.
Really what we're looking for, I am a local neighborhood, so we're looking for one of my neighbors, Phil Mooney, down this street, he has a neighborhood zoom in by his five-year-old, his neighbor, who started to make a sign or whatever the traffic is going past. And the five-year-old says, don't do that, mom, we'll get shot, you know? Okay? So what I'm asking for is that our neighborhood and all neighborhoods have the same kind of traffic authority as downtown does. I ought to be able to walk from my house across the street knowing that the traffic is gonna be in the line.
Yeah, and we understand that. I wanna make sure we got a lot of questions. I wanna get to those. I appreciate your questions and certainly we'll be able to, you know, follow up for them. Well, can you fill out a form for me? We've got a whole stack of forms and I wanna make sure that we respect everybody's time and who got here first. So, before we do that, I want to, the champ is in that building so I wanna recognize Roy Jones Jr. has spent three, four days a week throughout middle school, hanging out at the gym at Spring Street because my granddad, Richard Curran, was coming to America. He was one of those guys at Roy's Gym, like those four guys that sat in the back. And so David Isom was there, Mike Cortez was there and all that, man. So definitely a hero of mine, man. Glad to have you here.
I'm glad with cops.
Yeah, and thank you for what you do, the cops center and everything else, man. Obviously an icon here. I appreciate having you here. All right, Walter, you ready?
Yes, sir. Oh. I got, number one issue I'd like to address. Where is the Neighborhood Department?
We don't have a Neighborhood Department.
You don't have what? Then that's the problem. All of a sudden, we don't have no, the city administration has no association with the neighborhoods. The neighborhoods sits here and the neighborhood makes the city.
Right.
But we have no communication, CNAP have no communication. And the thing about it, when you move the Neighborhood Department, you didn't have a, you kinda CNAP say, this is what we finna do with the Neighborhood Department. What are you gonna do about the association? You spent $50,000 on a study for parking. Now, are you willing to spend $50,000, see how you can improve our neighborhood? The neighborhoods are being neglected. You need to find a plan. Sit down with CNAP and our Neighborhood Association to find out what the neighborhood doing. What do we want? How do we look for the city? All of a sudden, there are no interactions between your administration and the Neighborhood Association. So I wanna know if you're gonna sit down to develop a plan to improve the Neighborhood Association, to improve all of the neighborhood. And I put, I left a brochure for you and then before I left, Mr. Smith gave you a brochure when we was down there at the dedication at Chappy James, brought some issues with pictures and all. And also left you a photo tonight about neighborhoods. Neighborhood makes the city. Not downtown because the trees now into the city. You know, people don't want cherry, they don't want yards. But that makes neighborhoods. That makes neighborhoods. Cherry, neighbors getting together, having neighborhood. But you're neglected, your administration is neglected. So I'd like to know tonight, are you willing to invest money and time into the Neighborhood Association?
Sure, happy to ask that question, happy to answer that question. I appreciate it. The, it's pretty simple to me. We don't create departments to create departments, we have to have impact. And so what I would, what I would push back on is just saying, we, you should have a Neighborhoods Department because that means you care about neighborhoods. I care about outcomes. And so what I would tell you is there's many people up here and in our different departments, whether it be Public Works, whether it be Parking, 311, Parks and Rec, to make the implication or presumption that because of apartment that doesn't exist, and I wasn't really getting any reports from those meetings, and so just because it doesn't exist, doesn't mean we don't care about neighborhoods. That's a very far-reaching implication. So, I'm always, will entertain and interested in solving problems with outcomes. So, and so what I would always ask is if that is the question, if the assumption is that because we don't have a Neighborhoods Department that didn't exist four years ago and doesn't exist now, it's not, that was not something that was longstanding, that means we somehow don't care about neighborhoods. I've lived in eight different neighborhoods in this city. I care very much about that. And the vast, vast majority of our time and bandwidth is spent in neighborhoods because that's where the people live. So, I hear you. I just wanna be clear that just because we don't have a department doesn't mean we don't do anything in neighborhoods.
Well, still question is, are you willing to invest time and money to strengthen neighborhoods, Neighborhoods and Neighborhood Association? That's what I wanna, are you willing to spend the time and the money to strengthen?
Of course we do. We already did. So, I mean, of course we did, yeah.
You said it because I've been down here long enough. I know what it is. We used to have, you had the Neighborhood, the Florida Neighborhood Association provision here. And that's the city bought that there here. We used to have where the city would invest and pay me and some other neighborhood president to go down to Neighborhood Conference to come back with ideas and find out what other neighborhoods are doing in Florida. What are we doing? Because one thing about it, and I must have made, David told me one time, I always remember, if you take care of this neighborhood, they take care of this neighborhood. When I look back, I got a beautiful city. But if you're not even doing nothing, investing to try to strengthen the neighborhoods, we not gonna survive. Only one section in town gonna survive. That's all I'm saying. Now, the next issue I'd like to bring up is the idea of buying, when you say you, when you went to the cherry trust fund, you had to $3.5 million to buy Lakeview Gym over there. Well, I'm looking at number one, I didn't vote for the Cherry Trust Fund to own any property. I voted for them to strengthen education for kids in this area, in Scaven County. Because if the city comes, what about the school board, what about the county? But they are not, to me, their responsibility not to own property. You know, far against the Cherry Trust Fund owning any property. Now, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the paper, correct me if I'm wrong, you said you got about $7 million available for Fricker Center. Well, I grew up in Fricker Center. Number one, you look at it, Fricker Center is landlocked. Fricker Center is landlocked. What are you gonna do? You're gonna grow up but you cannot really make that a beautiful city where it can be encouraged. Now, to me, it makes sense. If you can make, if you got $7 million to rebuild Fricker Center, why not take $3.5 million and buy the, the gym over there at Lakeview? Now we got about, but three more million left, we can enhance that building. Then the children over here, and I'm telling you, it's time for people on the west side to have a pool. It's time for a pool to be built on the west side. And you could, with $7 million, you can accomplish most of those goals. And then another thing about, to me, I'm looking at, the area. Now you're expanding. You're expanding. You got a whole lot of senior students apartment over there by the, by the center. And we have to get it spanned because then you a group of whole lot of people and the youth on that west side, they need a pool. They need, you know, this opportunity here is to move Fricker forward. But, man, what's Fricker, what are you gonna do? You can go three stories up and then you look at, at the people. You still serve in the same area. But now, if you move it, we get up there, then how many people can you serve? But we need to look at all these ideas about trying to improve things. But spending $7 million on Fricker, this is a waste of money. It's a waste of money.
All right. Well, let me, there's a couple missteps that you, correct me if I'm wrong, I just wanna give you a couple of quick corrections on that. Number one, the 3.6 million you were talking about, the Lakeview Center, that is to build a Children's Resource Center, which is, would be children's health services provided by Community Health, the gymnasium and, and there is no scenario that I have proposed that Children's Trust would own the property. It would be that the city would own the property. That has been what is proposed. Now, what the Children's Trust decides to vote on, decides to do when they have another executive director, I don't know. But, but just so it's clear, me and you agree on that. I'm not proposing that the Children's Trust owns it because I think the city should own it and operate it because, you know, I'm not sure how that would run on it, to be honest with you, if it was something that could be voted out one day and then they owned an asset. That wouldn't make a whole lot of sense. The second thing on Fricker, it's 9.5 million actually, which is even better, but understand, and this is confused a lot of times, you may see the city spend a million dollars on something and then you say, well, why don't you spend it over here? Well, the only reason we would have 9.5 billion dollars is because it was 100% grant funded, none of your tax money, 9.5 billion to help improve a community asset. But there's specific ties to that. You can't just take that and then go move it into anything you want. And so, five and a half million dollars is to help storm harden and to help make, modernize the community aspects of Fricker Center. Then another four, four million would be a separate building that provides workforce development, healthcare and education. That, we already have commitments from different agencies that they would build a building at Fricker and would become a senior center, which would be the second one that we have in the, in the city. So, so I just wanna be clear though, that, that money can't just go to anything. They're tied to... tied to those grants.
I'm gonna ask you a question. You can't go back and talk to the people that did the grant, because, oh, but, 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 understand what I'm saying. You got to tell my spending money for landlocked, and it's not gonna benefit a whole lot of people in the community. You know, you got to look at, what does the future look at? And I'm definitely, if kids over there need swimming pool on the west side, now that's one issue you can grant.
Yeah, and I, and I hear you. And Walter, we'll meet tomorrow, right? Or is it, no, I know we've got a, what?
December.
Okay, we're, yeah, we, sorry, we've got, I know we've got a meeting on the books, happy to talk about the pool. Uh, the pool comes with its challenges, that there's a significant subsidy to run these pools, uh, you know, just understand that. You gotta build it and then it runs about, right now, I think we spent about $300,000 to run the two pools that we have in, each year. So, not saying we wouldn't do it, I just mean that's a, that's something that we have to consider, but...
You know, I guess I've been in this town long enough, we shuffling money all the time, I would play.
Yeah.
So, you know, when you're talking, people keep talking to me about, well, this money and this money, I don't, as I know I've been here long enough.
Right.
You can make it happen, you can shuffle, you shuffle money all the time, you shuffle sixty, sixty dollars, but with it, I can put it up on, up on the soccer field up there. So, oh, what, a group of rocks.
Oh, okay, all right. I remember that.
It wasn't you, it wasn't you, but I've been here long enough to know the budget to be shuffling around. I haven't felt the effect up there with it, like the budget's been shifting around. Well, and then, I'm gonna get a, next thing, six, three, you fix 311, then get your real 311 passed.
Okay. All right, so just last thing, just on the grants part of it, those grants are awarded for providing specific services. So it's not just a grant that you can rewrite and then change to something else. The reason we would get those dollars is because we meet a certain standard by improving a community center, so I just want to be clear that's, so there is no option to rewrite the grant. The only reason we would get the money is because we were making those specific improvements. So Walter, I appreciate it. I have got Benny Washington. Just like Roy, he won't remember this, but him and his son came in and beat us up in basketball Catholic, he won't remember us because we weren't any good, but y'all, your team was good.
I'm Benny Washington, I'm with James, we watch the education and sports. And my biggest concern in the holistic approach for the community is at-risk youth and undeserved community. And I always get his little sample, and I've been here my whole life. Let's just go up Fairfield Drive by Prince College Village, let's go over there to Alcones, Arnold King, to Savante's, let's swing a right on Savante's, go down to W Street, swing another right on W Street and come back to Fairfield Drive. And in that whole area, with gentrification going on, houses are popping up everywhere. Okay? And eventually the tax bill is gonna go up, and the people that's been there are not gonna be able to pay the property tax, hopefully we can rent property those folks in. But in that whole area, there are no schools. You know, Prince College High School is, you know, the one where I'd be, it would probably be a charter school. CAYS and those other schools, they were there before integration. And, you know, we're pumping money into those schools, but the community needs something bigger, something better, something new. There's always the small stuff, we're gonna repair it. And so the schools are not good, and when you close school down, the land depreciates, of course, property value go down, businesses move out, crime moves in. But the other thing is, with all that going on, we don't have any, the grocery stores, the food. It's like the barns, you walk in, you smell the food, it's like it's not healthy. So it's a food desert. We can't find a bank, a ATM in that area, none of that. Okay, the closer one, you know, there's one on Davis, that Bank of America right over that own corner of Davis and by the fire department. It's, it's no banking, people don't have transportation, healthcare is gone now because they're closing down the hospital, it's a bad situation. So I've been in education over 40 years, I care about kids. My kids are graduated, engineering Atlanta, one working at Navy Federal, they are going, you know, they're doing pretty well for themselves. But I care about all the kids, and I see these kids at Prince College Village, Morris College, Addis College, Haynes Street Apartment, you know, Shannon Town, Inwood Heights, um, they don't have opportunities, they can't afford after-school programs. And we have an after-school program and it's involved around education, and it's big, and it's growing. We, we've had a small this week, now we're into, it's full. And we need a, the thing is, we went in that community and asked kids for tutoring, and we go out in the community, we come back with two kids, two. And I mean, I'm, I'm on the ground, we're on the front lines. And then, so we using the wrong bake, so we had to get some more bake, you know, that's the wrong, we came back with a basketball program, now we got two 300 kids. Okay, I'm, and so, but when they come for the basketball, they gotta come, but they gotta have a 2.5 GPA, you don't have the grades, they drop their head and they look and say, no son, no young lady, it's not gonna mean you can't play, but it does mean it's mandatory that you go to tutoring in order to play. Now youth sports, and I'm a strong proponent of youth sports, but there are so many youth sports programs around, you got kids playing with four and five L's. So junior come up playing, and then, he can play now, he got four touchdowns by halftime. Okay, just hear me out, hear me out. So he can play elementary, he can play middle school, when they get to high school, they gonna ask for a grade point average. Then he can't play, all right? Then say, well, go work on your grade, well, he never had any grades. So now they dropping out. And so now, when they dropping out, they can't get a job, and those are kids, you see all the shooting in the game thing that's going on around town? That's those kids. Most of those kids are former athletes, okay? So in our program, and I try to work the high school kids, I have two state championships, I coach 10 D1 ball players, we're gonna help 121 kids get scholarships. We graduated 168 out of 169 kids from that same area. So, you know, we closed down Scammy Youngs, but we never replaced that with another low-income housing place, we closed down the Aragon Court, and then replaced that with nothing else, and then we got a homeless problem, so we got a lot of issues going on. So all I'm saying, I try to deal with the high school kids, and, and, and the problem is this, I got cuts out. Pull your pants up, oh, here's your man. You know, and I'm like, I'm not taking too much of that because, you know, it's gonna be a problem where I come from. I'm a man, you wanna be a man, I'm gonna treat you like a man. So guess what we had to do? We had to fall back and get first, second, and third graders. Now we have kids from first grade to the ninth grade, all our kids are making their grades. We tracking them all the way to high school, when they get to high school, you gonna go to college, you gonna go to military, you gonna take a vocational trade, or we gonna get you a job. Now that's what we planning on doing, and it's growing. We don't have a space, you know, except we can go, we can get one day at Carr Center, we'll get it, one day at Lakeview, we'll get it, one day at Wayswood. We have 10 teams. We had a trial this weekend, we had 86 kids trial, but because we don't have the space, we're gonna only take 12. There's 74 kids walking the streets, and they're young. And the hardest part about coaching for me is cutting the kid. Now they get a 9, 10, 11, 12 graders, easy to cut them, you got the grades, you know, you want your pants sagging, you know, disrespectful, but when they're small kids and you cut them, you know, those kids got a chance to develop, they can learn, and then our kids, man, we going on field trips, and you know what, we took the kids over here on the beach, we took them over to, uh, what's over there with Geronimo?
Fort Pickens.
Fort Pickens. The kids never been to Fort Pickens, they didn't even know it was over there. You know, it just, these are some of the things that we're doing. All I'm saying is, for our program, they say, well, you gonna work with Fricker Center, a lot of these guys, these folks are not doing the education piece. We need a space, and I guess, I was raised up at Malcolm Young, I was hoping, I know Mel, you said it's done deal, it's, it's bad, I was hoping in some way we could save Malcolm Young. Now you said Carr Center, when they build these gyms, you can't accommodate these kids. And most people don't know what they're doing, they did it on the basketball, it's a football channel anyway. Okay? They have two goals. If I have 50 kids, I can't put 50 kids on two goals, or 25 on this end and 20, they can't do it. You gotta have a side goals. So you see that, you see it at all the gyms, all right? The only gyms that don't have two goals, Malcolm Young this one, Legion Field, this other one, and Fricker Center, all the other gyms, even the churches, two goals. So when you have a program, and we have over 200 kids in our program, and we turn away kids, all I'm saying is that's something that we can't, we would like to run our program out of Malcolm Young, but I know it's some move, probably a move point now, is there any other facility to help accommodate us? And for the city basketball program, I'm working with Reba right now because I know she for real, I done worked with those guys over there at Fricker Center, and who, who parking recreation guy, where you at, where you standing? Oh, you knew? Yeah. Welcome to the program. I just wanted to, I just wanted to let you know, we, we paid our money. See, all these 17's don't pay money, I guess they got an internal account and they pay their fees and they just play. Well, we're, no, probably, we paying 1,200, $1,400 for seven, eight teams to play, six teams in the league, when we supposed to get eight games and we only get three, okay? For the last four or five years, so we're like, I don't want no part of that. So I kind of, Reba's been very supportive, to try to get it up because kids are gravitating us, we got fans, black, white, red and yellow coming to us. Because the discipline, the structure, the education, okay? You, you gotta have it in your, in your program. I don't care what nobody says, that's what these kids need, and if somebody can help us out, I know between this young lady on this end, all the way this young lady right here, and the man in the middle, I know you got that magic wand. Okay, so anyway, that's, that's, that's...
All right, Coach, appreciate you. Well, next...
See, somebody, we, 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 we need something, we need something, everybody say, hey, think what you do for the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate, but we need some help. Because those kids, and, and guess what, I got a funny feeling, they won't build a new school, and I'm going to the school board, me too.
Yeah.
Now, when all this gentrification take place, when, when, when all of it take place, they gonna build a new school. Okay, I'm actually they gonna build a new school. And it's all, it's gonna be separate from the public school system. I can see that. Now, I'm not a prophet, but I just want to help our kids right now, but we looking for some type of action, please help us out, please.
Now, I hear you, Coach, thank you again, thank you for what you do. And, and really, going back to the, to Walter's question, I, I think what we're trying to do in many facets, including in Parks and Rec right now, is trying to seize some of the opportunity and also face the real facts that we have, that for generations, not last year, not two years before, we haven't prioritized taking care of the stuff that we have. And, and so, I, I played in city league at Malcolm Young, and now I gotta be the guy that's coming in and saying, we can't have a child in there without the roof maybe falling in.
But we got some people that come in to help fix that, man, I think it's, we're gonna do that.
No, so, I just, I want you to follow me because this moves in the future. Cop Center, when do you think the Cop Center was built? And you, it's got the same beams, it's got the same, it's not in the same condition, but what I'm saying is, we're gonna start getting serious about making sure that we take care of the things that we have, which does make it harder to build new things. And mayors like to build new things, because that's more exciting, but what I'm trying to do is...
For the kids, I'm talking about, man, I'm talking about for the, the, the undeserved...
Yeah, no, and I hear you.
Hold on, hold on, underserved, disadvantaged, at-risk, basically black and brown kids.
So, so let me, let me get to, so what our best option is, back to the Scammy Children's Trust, what our best option is, is a gym that's already complete, that has six goals in it that you speak of, that would be an all-children's resource center that helps kids at the city, at the county, that has the support of the county and the city, and that 3.5 billion dollars is a way for us to get a gym where we aren't having to just turn our head away from the reality of taking care of some of these things that have been for 30, 40 years neglected, that we're starting to take more seriously, but also trying to be able to find opportunities, so...
Can y'all say, can y'all say, uh, got me on the us?
We can't, we've already had it in private hands. So I mean, the issue with Malcolm Young is, number one, we would have to prove, I mean, it is in such disrepair, it would take millions of dollars, in, in our opinion, for us, with two engineered opinions, for us to be able to even have a human being go in there safely. Not, not fix it, not renovate it, fix it. And then second is, anybody else, like yourself, it's a difference between saying, hey, someone, we're gonna come fix it and it's gonna be a public amenity for the community. The issue we, that we, I believe, failed that last time was we said, hey, we're gonna keep this building that's falling in on itself, but we, we're gonna give it to a private entity that it, it's not in the public good. And so...
But the private entity didn't do nothing with it, I'm saying, with integrity and the character that we have, we gonna get it done.
I hear you, but, but it's a, it, it is a moot point, because we, we've had two different engineers, one internally, one externally, look at this, we've done a structural analysis on it, there is no, I mean, it would take multi-multi-millions dollars to keep the roof on, not fix it up, not make it nice, it'd be the, it'd be the same 40, 50-year-old infrastructure in it, it would cost millions of dollars. So that is just the reality where we are at Malcolm Young, I don't want to...
People look at it too, man, and it, it didn't look as bad as they just...
I, I understand.
I'm not, you know, but at the end of the day, I agree with Walter on Fricker Center, it's landlocked, it's nothing you can do over there. You have Addis Court over there, it's crowded, it's congested, that's, I, I don't see how that's gonna work. These kids need some place, not only just for the gym, somewhere they can walk around for a track, something far, something nice, okay? Because it's, see, even, I'm looking at the Rattlers down here, it's all throwed up in there, you can't even drive through there on game day, it's always just find a spot, throw it in there for the underprivileged folks, and they'll shut up. That's what it seems like. And we'll build something nice, something decent, somewhere, something gonna have some pride in. When they close these schools down, that's when the pride leave the community. So when you build something nice, but you know what, we got a big jailhouse over there, all right, it's in that community, and when them kids grow up, I had a little kid tell me one time, said, Coach, why you care? We nothing but the N-word, we going to jail, third grade! Okay, third grade, I, I've had this with two different kids, it was like, break my heart, man, and that's the reason why I'm here. I don't have a kid, I don't have a grandkid, you know, here to do this, okay? My passion is kids, I'm an educator, and I don't get involved in the politics, I think, well, come downtown and let's network, and I don't wanna do that, okay? You just talking, everybody wants to see everybody, no, I'm not here for that, I'm here for work. But now when it start affecting our kids and our community, then I feel compelled, then I must come out and stand up, and let us, you know, so, I don't get together and find something for our program, but so...
Yeah, I'm happy to discuss that with you, we'll try to find out.
Fix up the, you know, the AMV, you know, if we can get some money, you know, for us, for our community, for our kids, and guess what? Now we got kids coming from Gulf Breeze, the Barco on Beach, Daphne Alabama, Robbinsdale, all those kids are coming to our program.
Yeah.
Because it's structured, it's discipline, it's education, and of course we got to play the basketball.
All right, all right. All right, Marsha Foreman.
Um, I, I want to address this Airbnb problem, which I see as a problem, because I see, I'm not against urban renewal, you know, it's really nice, but what you've got is a lot of people that have come across Ninth Avenue into these neighborhoods that are generational neighborhoods, people who've lived there all their life, and their grandma and grandpa and whatnot, and what you have is a bunch of people who are opportunistically buying up these cheap places, fixing them up, making an Airbnb, and they're doing that in East Hill too, I'm just around and buying this, trying it. But I, I think instead of turfing it off to the state and saying, well, the state's gonna get around to doing that or whatever, let's, we don't have to spend a billion dollars on a study, I hate these studies, because everybody disagrees with them, then they never do anything, it's like, so, but, but I really think we need to look into how an Airbnb is created, what people are using it for. Instead of letting all these people come into a neighborhood, fix something up, they don't live there, and that's part of the problem, and they don't, don't live there. They don't care about whether you vote for more taxes, you ought to care whether I vote for more taxes. If I want to improve my neighborhood and I want to vote for more taxes, and I better, I'm sure, live there. So I think it's very important to address this and find out how we can kind of regulate this. And also, these are businesses, and yet they seem to have no certifications, guidelines or anything. These are people who are staying in a house, it's not regulated like a hotel or anything. And they're taking up a lot of homes in areas that used to have affordable housing, and no, you can't have an affordable house there because you got some guy who's charging $160 a night. So I... So, I, I think it deprives us of, of the ability to allow people to stay in a neighborhood that basically needs to come up, but it doesn't need to be abandoned by the actual residents of the city. So I think we should look into that a little bit, I really do. And, um, the next thing, like I said, is affordable housing. If these, many of these places, instead of make a quick buck for everybody that lives out of town, make it an opportunity to make me fix these up, encourage. I know there used to be a program, and I don't know if it is anymore, but there used to be a program, if you fix a place up, you would get reimbursed X number of dollars if it was in an enterprise area. And I think it's a very, a good thing, and I think it should be more promoted to people to try and come in so that people can continue to actually live and thrive in these neighborhoods. And, uh, it, it's nominal what you might want to reimburse somebody for, if you give them an opportunity. And the third thing is kind of silly, but, um, I wanna know about, all of a sudden, my garbage isn't collected till like 5:30, 6 o'clock at night. It's kind of weird, and I don't know whether it's a personnel problem, or a, 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 a equipment problem maybe? And also, at the house, you know, that survey that we all had to take, the house, people said, oh, would you like to pay either $10 a month, recycle? Well, I'm no problem with that, but, but my problem is that for all the years I've been recycling, half of the time, they haven't recycled jack, they just keep sending it to landfill half the time, you don't even know if they're doing it, so.
I agree. So I'd be right to make a change, because it wasn't working.
Yeah, yeah, and guess what? If you take some of these poor people that are still out there with their stick, collecting garbage on the side of the road, maybe put them down in a nice little recycling center, have them start doing some of that for you. That may be punishment to some people, I don't know, but I think it's not, not any worse than standing with a stick, so.
No, I appreciate that, uh, I'll, I'll try to knock, uh, knock those three out. So Airbnb, understand, the, the state issue is a state, issue of preemption, which means there's state rules of what you can and can't do, that we're not allowed to supersede. So, understand that, that some of the balance isn't just that we choose to do or not do something with Airbnb, that there's limitations on what we could do regardless of how we feel about it, number one. Number two, I believe you, I believe you in that. Research shows across the country, I, I looked at, uh, and sat with folks that did a full analysis of downtown Baltimore, and they looked at, at the different neighborhoods that had more Airbnbs in them, and then you typically had more code complaints because you had somebody care about it less. So you have neighbors that lived there 20, 30 years, then someone buys us an Airbnb, they're just less likely, they'll even pull out the landscaping, they'll do things like that, and then we see more code complaints, potentially more crime. Uh, so, so your, your hunch of that is that, are you less likely to take care of it, uh, if, if it's an Airbnb versus a homesteaded place, certainly a long-time resident. Uh, we see that, and, and the data that I've looked at in Baltimore certainly suggests that, and we expect that around the country. That being said, uh, that's why we are working on a complete, and Chief can speak to some details, uh, if you have questions, but, uh, we're completely overhauling our code enforcement. Uh, we have some rules in the books that have been around 25, 30 years, that don't really make any sense. Uh, and that will, I, when we get that right and get that modernized, that will, that not, that doesn't mean we're gonna restrict Airbnbs because of other rules, but what we're saying is, that will give us the ability that if we do see problems with, potentially, which is more likely, because they are Airbnbs, that we have enough teeth to be able to do something a little bit more than we did today. So we are working on a complete overhaul of code. Um, and, uh, I'll, I'll mention the garbage collection, just so you, in case you don't know, you get garbage collection two days a week now. So whatever day you already had it, so if you're, you either have it Monday, uh, Monday, Wednesday, I'm sorry, Monday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Friday, depending on your neighborhood, excuse me. So, um, so if you have, one time is the only time you have a different day now, uh, because we switched the, the office. Um, recycling, we're, we're waiting, any minute, we should be getting a report back of what we think the per-head opt-in cost. I wanna be clear, if anybody heard that, we are not forcing anybody to, to pay for recycling if that comes around, that would be an opt-in only, uh, you would not, you can continue to have twice a week, uh, you could choose to do that or not. So we're gonna get a price from a third party. We've also opened a recycling collection, uh, the block north of Pitts Cola High, every Saturday from 7 to 3. But the reality is exactly what you just said. We had 50% contamination, which was trash. You took the 50%, you take the 50% of things that would met the definition of recyclable, not, and, and the majority of that doesn't have a market, meaning, it might be recycled, paper might, this might be recyclable, but if not, so, by the time you whittled down what was actually being recycled versus, and, and so it felt good, we were, I do it at my house, it felt good to empty the serve model and put it into the thing, and we call it wish cycling, you, you wish shit away, it, it left my curb, so it must have been recycled. And the, just the fact is, it wasn't, we've known that since 2016, um, that we've had 50% contamination, and, uh, as I said, I tell people the easiest thing to do is nothing in my job, uh, that's the easy thing. This has not been an easy decision from a political standpoint, but it's the right decision for our, our community. We wanna have a positive impact on the environment, certainly, that that's gonna be the way that we have to do it. Uh, and on affordable housing, it was mentioned about being taxed out of, out of homes, I wanna make sure people understand, uh, in the state of Florida, we have to save our homes, uh, so just in case people haven't misconstrued that situations where someone's living in their home and the property value goes up, that they would be priced out. If it's their homestead, uh, it can only by law go up 3% per year. Doesn't matter if their house is worth triple, uh, quadruple, uh, what they paid for it 20, 30 years ago. So, uh, other states, that is a bigger issue, I just wanna be clear on that, that in the state of Florida, and in the city of Pensacola, if you live in your home and you are homesteaded there, uh, you will only see a 3% increase. And that's why you may have a property tax value of $100,000 on a house, if you've lived there a long time, when it's really worth 350 or 400,000, so I just wanna be clear on that. Uh, affordable housing is gonna be, obviously, what happens at the Baptist Legacy Campus is gonna play a huge role and, and opportunity, and that we wanna make sure that both Baptist Hospital, the city, the county, and the legislature now, uh, is gonna, that we're gonna be able to do something that's impactful for everybody who lives here. Um, we, we've talked about different things like community benefits agreements, for example, if housing is built there, affordable, senior, family, that the requirement be that the first people that get access to that are the people who are in the neighborhood. Uh, that that's not gonna just be people moving in from out of town, that don't provide the opportunity for the folks who live here, things like that. So, there's a, there's a long way to go, there's an $18 million demolition that needs to take place, which is a heavy, heavy lift. Um, and, uh, it's easy, this is one of these things that a city or a county could say, that's not our job, that's private property, that's not our job. Uh, but the fact of the matter is, 50 acres in the heart of our city, uh, in, in, in a community uh, that has relied on that for many, many years, is our job. So, uh, we're taking on as best we can. So, uh, I really look at that, uh, as, as, as well as Malcolm Young, uh, as potential opportunities for affordable housing moving forward, we're trying to get aggressive as we can. Um, and, and Victoria, uh, if you'll grab that mic, she can mention briefly, you talked about the different programs they have, to help them fix up houses. I know we have some dollars now coming in, uh, in play for Hurricane Sally fix-ups, that we were able to earn about $5.8 million of a fund that would help you if you had had some Hurricane Sally damage along that same, uh, but, but Victoria, you gotta mention where we are there.
Yeah, so the, the city's CRA, um, this has, have some residential repair funding, can you hear me? I think this might be.
Yeah, it's easy to, when, when you hand, it's easy to hit that button off, yeah. If not, I can, there you go.
Am I on now? Oh, I'm on.
So, uh, the city's CRA does have, um, some residential repair programs. Currently, we're going through a little bit of a, a transition with those programs. So, um, with that, we're gonna be taking those programs, um, into a new software management, um, system. Also, in our East Side District, we have quite a, um, a long waiting list, estimated about nine years right now, so we're trying to work through that. Um, as a strategy towards working through that, we will be working with our, you know, our housing department. They have recently been awarded a, a large CDBG grant, um, which they are working on getting that program kicked off. So we'll be working with our, um, clients on the waiting list, and those residents that are within our district, um, to try to get them that assistance. Barrett, did you wanna talk a little bit about the program?
So, you're good, good, Barrett.
So, so your housing department does have repair programs for income-eligible owner occupants, and so, and that's available. Um, we do, we also have a waiting list, one of the things that we did address is um, applying for the CDBG Hurricane Sally funding, um, so we're hoping in the new year to have that awarded. Um, so that would be available specific for homeowners that need, um, repairs or even replacements, so, um, and we'll be working with CRA to try to take folks off of our waiting list, um, as well as CRAs, as well as just open up to those that have those needs. So we were awarded almost $6 million under that.
Alright, um, well, thank you, and, and I just wanted to, yeah, I'll give you a second to follow up. We got a lot of questions in 28 minutes left, I know we've, we've been moving a little slow, we only got through four questions in an hour, so if y'all, if you did put two or three questions on here, if you guys don't mind, there are some commonalities in here that we'll make sure that, that we address as well. So, um, if you, if you don't get to your second or third question, then we'll try to address it as best we can, but, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I, I still wasn't sure why they're collecting our garbage at 5:30, 6 o'clock at night.
If, and we'll get an address.
Ducks to position on Wednesday.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll, we'll get an address and happy to look in and get an answer for you, one way or the other, so.
I'll live with it.
Okay. No problem, thank you for letting us know. Alright, uh, let's, uh, have, which one?
Okay, they're all the same.
Oh, okay, alright, alright, let's do, uh, Arwila Legardo.
Yeah, and I'm Arwila Legardo, and I've lived here since I was about 12 years old, and I'm a senior citizen now. And I, just coming back to the city, so just a couple of things, I don't know if code enforcement is there.
Police reports to, or code reports to police, so you can answer some questions.
Well, that's not fair, at any rate. That's not really fair. However, uh, I live in Woodland Heights, and we have eyesores, and even though you get a pickup a week or so ago, you come back into Woodland Heights, you have old Winnebago's and old cars stolen. We're talking about our property values, where they're going down by the trash, and just, and we've, we've got trash and bottles and stuff, okay? Uh, I'm, I'm a senior citizen, I expected better when I got to be this age, okay? Now, you are new, so I wanna talk about some sidewalks, we were promised, in my neighborhood, no sidewalks. There's, there are some, but there's a lot of them missing, but the previous administration promised the sidewalks. We don't have them yet. Alright, and, um, CRA. So, I came back to town, I have this old house, it's 63 years old, and I'm 70. So I started doing renovations, and I got on the phone and I called to see about getting some help. Okay, so, they got me, senior citizen, on the same list of somebody that's 25 years old, trying to get their house repaired. Uh, however, when I really got to asking questions, I realized that the renovations started from downtown, uh, 17th Avenue, and they were coming in, but they stopped right there at Fairfield, they stopped at Ninth Avenue, and they stopped at Davis Highway. So as a result, my Woodland Heights area, this area in there, we get nothing.
You're not, you're not up there.
The CRA is a designated area that where those dollars have to be spent, so it's not.
But I'm only trying to find out why was this particular area carved out? Because in this area, my house is 63 years old, so, and, and my, and my neighbors, their houses are equal. But you started, you started at 17th Avenue, see, I used to live on the avenues, and you started downtown Pensacola, and I'm gonna tell you something, guys, you all built all these fine, fine houses downtown Pensacola, but the majority of the people that live here and work can't even afford to buy them. See, because they don't make the money. Now, now today, I might be able to swing it, but I've been gone for 13 years. See, I'm, I left here, and I'm coming back. And my children, they graduated from college or whatever, they can, because they can come back and afford it. But just regular, run-of-the-mill folks cannot afford all these high-priced houses we put in the city. Now, you've done a good job, it's beautiful. Coming into the city, it's beautiful. But you're building, we are densifying, as we say, a city, and you've got your people that can't even afford, they're talking about the youth. These young folks that can work, they can't afford to buy these houses. They can't afford to do it, and I'm trying to figure out, what are we doing?
They're not built as good as old ones.
You know, I mean, they're not, but, but our city, we're doing some things in our city, and I mean, I've been in the city.
Yeah.
So I'm simply saying, Pensacola is beautiful, but we need to make this city inclusive. You've got a whole bunch of poor folks here that can't do a thing, okay? Hey, I'm, I'm 70. You know, I mean, I left and I'm coming back, I can.
Yeah.
But there's so many of these young folks that are graduating from my school, there are no jobs for them, that ain't paying any money. You know, uh, yeah, McDonald's needs to pay $15, and they need two of them $15-hour jobs to afford those houses that you all were building downtown, and you're building them all the way through because they started about $350,000.
Okay, so, um, no, thank you.
So, on my sidewalks, she, she heard this, my sidewalks, and as far as that seat, you know, why this little area has been carved out? Who wants somebody to give me a call? They can tell me.
We can, we can answer that, yeah, we can answer that now, yeah. So, a couple of things, uh, we will look into the sidewalks, as you said, I'll have to, I don't know what promise was made. But, but we, let us find out, or, or if you're still around when we wrap up, happy to give you, with exact addresses and all that, we'll, we'll have you to look. So, uh, that's number one. Number two, code enforcement, totally agree with you. Uh, we have to set the value of what it is for you to pay your tax dollars and live in the city, and that means your neighbors not parking on sidewalks, not parking in yards, those kinds of things that are causing issues for you.
I don't care.
Yeah, so we're.
It's trash.
Right. Overhaul, I'm, I'm, I'm very confident in the direction that we're going. Uh, we have new leadership in code enforcement that's very energetic and passionate about overhauling the things that we have, so.
Take some volunteers, I, I know you could get you some old volunteers that would come and help, okay? And come by and take pictures, now that's what they did in the previous city. You had old folks that rode around, took those pictures, and turned them in, because our neighborhoods and how they look, it's important. When you have trash on your ground in your neighborhood, those children that you're talking about, that, that takes away a sense of pride, okay? So you learn to have pride in, in your surroundings, and, and that's a part of teaching these.
Totally agree.
Now, I heard another gentleman talking about some schools, you guys haven't built any schools in this city forever, I'm 70.
Well, we don't build schools, so.
Nothing in the city. See, there's nothing new in the city. I, I mean, my, my 59, eight-year-old sister, little sister went to Spencer Bend, and it's something else, baby pickets is gone. I mean.
Well, well, let me answer, but we got, again, we got, we are running out of time, so let me, let. So the CRA question, community redevelopment agency, I don't, I don't know if those got established before I was born, or what year it was, it's been years and years. Those are designated areas, and, and just, just let me be clear, when you say houses you're building, and this is what you guys are deciding, selfishly for the city, the bigger the CRA, the better for us. That what happens in the CRA, the dollars that we're talking about, are, that means instead of the county and city splitting, give or take, tax revenue, it all comes to city so we can redevelop those areas. So, those are areas long designated, so trust me, if it was, if it was subjective, we'd take the entire city limit and put it in the CRA if we could, uh, and so we can provide that, so.
But we have a part of Woodland Heights that has been cut out, it's not even included. Our area, it's not even included, she lives in the area.
Yeah, if we get included in the CRA, I'll do it tonight. It'd be good for the city, so.
I would want to make it take a little more.
Yeah, so, I wish Commissioner Moes here, I'd ask him to make sure that we could get included in the CRA, so we could get.
I already talked to him about it, I, I talked to him, and he was kind of.
Because if, that means all the revenue and the redevelopment would come to us, so.
Well, sir, he suggested that I talk to this nice lady, and I've talked to her too. Now, he was just next there, and I'm gonna keep on asking until I get an answer.
What's that?
Why, why you're carved out in this area? It's a very narrow area that's been carved out.
Um, I, I, I can't speak to
No, you can.
40 or 50 years ago, why, what they decided based on census tracts, all I'm telling you is, that there's no.
I just needed to share.
Okay, alright, well, I'm sorry. Uh, we can't do any more three-question ones, so, uh, if we wanna get to everybody. That was her.
Ms. Legardo, Ms. Legardo. Legard.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
Okay, so we're hurrying Ms. Legard, I did want to address what you were saying real quickly, and this is the part where the city administrator is probably telling me to watch my mouth, I'm almost gonna go in and say it. And we, we know where majority at in our neighborhood, right?
Yes.
And what we see, is people will leave, they'll move, they'll tear down the house, and build like three houses in the space of that, and of course, it's an expensive house, $500,000 I've seen in the east, the, the East Hill neighborhood, right? So of course, we know the, how that affects the rest of the neighborhood. Those of you who are still here remaining, I'm the most dedicated to, because. dedicated to because in that way, you're saying that you love your neighborhoods enough that you want to invest in it, right? And what ends up happening is when the rates rise, whether it be rent or just the new housing developments come up, nobody can afford it. So that's why young folks, maybe your children's age, can't afford to live in the house that you would have lived in 40 years ago, right? But think about it. When we sell our houses, we sell it for what we want to sell it for. So there has to be a level of accountability from our own community.
Yes.
About what we're doing to make things worse for everybody else. And I really didn't want to get here in front of all these folks, because you know how sometimes you can't have certain conversations in front of certain folk, right?
But that is our problem.
But what we have to do, I'm Ms. Williams, so what we have to do is be dedicated enough to where we're saying this is how we want our neighborhoods to look. And you have this other side. You have a very broad, wide, different neighborhood, right? And some people will say, well, we don't mind that because we just want our home values to increase. They don't care, because that's what they want. Then you have other people who are saying, we would rather our homes keep a lower cost weight to it, right? So what we have to do, and this, are you part of the Neighborhood Association?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because that's where I, that's where I see you. So what we have to be able to do is be more self-determining about how we want our communities to grow and what we want that to look like. And that has nothing to do with government. That just has to do with us.
I think that has to do with code enforcement, broken down cars on the street corners. So it's more than just your piece of property. We want our neighborhoods to thrive, but we want also the codes to be enforced, trying for the, to have just as much care about our neighborhood as other neighborhoods. So that is not self-determining. That is another department doing their job.
I'm saying, when it comes to, if you look at Woodland Heights, the reason is so desirable. Number one, it's in the middle of everything. It's close to everything. People want to live there now, and people have, and I know that. Yeah, I live, y'all live, we live right by each other. We probably talking about the same house. So, so what I want to say before I go to the next question, and because it's really not a city issue, I would like for us to talk to each other about how we would like our neighborhoods to look, and how, you know, you can't do anything about them folks. Get that mattress on the side of the house. I'm just gonna say it. You know what I'm saying? So I'll leave it at that. But, but what we can do is be more self-determining and talking about what we want to promote and how we want to talk to each other about what we want to see in our own community. And I'll just leave it at that.
Let's do East Side Neighborhood. East Side Neighborhood. We can do it all together.
Is there any particular reason why this has to be held for our, our, because it's pretty obvious, like, if you put an article in the article.
He's signed a contract.
So, is there any particular reason why you have to cut it off for our, our?
If there's questions that need to be answered, I'm happy to stay long. We also, you know, we've got 16, 17 people up here. We've got, you know, people that have children and have, you know, like you guys do. So, you know, what we're saying is that's, that's the time that we've allotted. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I can stick around afterwards to be able to make sure that you get in the right place, but we gotta have some kind of limit on it.
These are combined.
Okay.
We can all go together. We've got the same one.
They'll be all the same.
All of us, we all gonna come together.
Okay.
Okay. So, East Side Neighborhood Association. I'm Mary Williams. I'm an attorney. I work with East Side Neighborhood. I'm also a resident of District 5, but I'm in East Hill. We have the issues we've been working on for a long time. And you can introduce yourself. I'm an East Side Neighborhood Association, but we have a list of things we've been following over the years.
There's a strong policy.
I've got yours. We'll talk about policy in a second.
And I'm gonna give them the list. Give me the genere for us in your room. What's your question?
Just, you all know Ms. Lars Hayes, East Side Neighborhood.
Yeah, that's right here.
All right. And so we have a list, and this comes back from over the 10th. Jean.
Well, Jean, you wrote in, the president for East Side Neighborhood Association.
Of course, Mr. Charles.
And Mr. Charles is our project manager for East Side.
I'm gonna do it. I'll just do it. I'll shut down since 1988. No, she's the secretary. I may have to pull up and say a word.
We have a list, and I'm just gonna name the topics that we want.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, you'll get, yeah.
Because in the interest of time.
Right, thanks.
Longstanding problem, two-way Martin Luther King and Davis Highway. That has been ongoing for years. It is a public safety issue. So every day, we drive, I know I drive it, there's not a car coming the wrong way every day. And we are watching it. Kids are in the street every day. They promise time and a time.
And we've got an update for you.
Okay. And we know that that's a state thing. We understand that, but some.
Well, we're on it. We'll give you, I'll give you that.
There needs to be done. Cecil Hunter Park has been in development for 25 years, whatever. I don't know how long, but that's another problem. That's longstanding. Those are the two. Mr. Mayor, you've been doing a great job, but I have to tell you, homelessness is not the top of our list in this neighborhood, okay? We are not homeless. We have homes, affordable housing, not our problem here. We have homes. We're trying to keep our homes. We need repair and renovation. We are citizens. We're longtime homeowners. We've been ignored. You're pandering to new people, people who come into our neighborhood, and they are moving to the top. Now, let me explain something to you, that nepotism. I understand that your mother is on the homeless task force. Your father is the developer of the major affordable, unaffordable housing. He's buying.
Which, which housing?
Argon Court. I think Argon, was your father not the developer of Argon?
I was nine years old. I don't know if that makes any impact.
But that's what I'm saying. Your father is the developer of all these unaffordable homes in our neighborhood, East Side. When we were dealing with the homeless problem under Rover, under the, in the past, in the past, I went around talking to the people, and they were renters, and the landlord was your father. So your father is developing or part of the development for East Side. And I just want you to know, I think that is kind of a conflict of interest, that homelessness and affordable housing, the two things your parents are headed in this city, kind of cause a problem. Now, I understand you're gonna be fair, and I want you to know how we're coming from, that we are gonna watch. But we, we have a problem with the homelessness here, but not the way you think. And so we want the other issues that they're gonna speak on, code enforcement. There is no code enforcement, and that means in my neighborhood, because I got a problem with code enforcement in East Hill. I can't get anybody to enforce that. So we definitely need it everywhere. And these are other stuff. The tree grant, if you're gonna give a grant, a grant is our taxpayers' money anyway, because there's nobody giving free money to us. So when he says it's a grant and it's not your tax dollars, I'm sorry, but I think it's federal taxes. And so what is that?
Well, if we didn't get the grant, then the money'd go to Miami's, your tax dollars, in that, in that concept. So, when you're.
I'm just saying, all, all of your monies, all of you, all the money you're doing and handing out, that's our money. We pay taxes, no matter what. So don't think it's a favor or they're, we're getting handouts. So we have the tree grant, which is supposed to be an understatement of neighborhood. I had to come and speak to you about that. That is some other things. What are the other ones? So homelessness is affordable. We're not worried. We want CRA seniors helping them keep their homes. You think that it's our problem to keep our neighborhoods up? Well, we're not zelling. We are losing our homes. Grandmothers, grandparents, they can't afford, when they die, the children and the grandchildren don't come in. They stay in the house rent-free until it falls apart. They don't do, I'm a probate lawyer, so they do not pass it down. The house stays vacant or it falls apart, and then there is, nobody takes care. We got problems about 56 abandoned houses right now. We need help trying to maintain our properties and make sure it passes down to the right person who's gonna pay taxes and don't keep it up.
All right, all right. So we got.
The thing is, when you have legacy families, right, who you have five or six siblings on a house, right?
You can't.
And you're going by the income of all of the siblings, but only one sibling is living in that house. And that's not just East Side, because I have a cousin down downtown as well. They can't get, you know, the repairs done on their house, even if they go through programs, because it's going by the total income of the family. So we need a way, so we need, we need a way to get, to get those repairs done. Because I have a cousin who right now needs to move on her house, and she can't get it done because.
No, there should be six.
Yeah.
So, and we could look into that.
Well, we, we had, we had, we had the Levin Farm come to a workshop about air property and what people need to do, or what they have options to do to.
Air property.
To get things transferred.
We don't want.
Oh, it was.
But that's the other thing, is people being notified when these type of workshops and things like that are taking place, it's not getting out to us. Like, for this, for this meeting here, I just received the invite or the postcard Monday.
Yeah, true.
And I live, and I live in the neighborhood between Fairfield and Blunt, 9th and Davis. So it's like, we didn't receive the invite, but my cousin, who lives on 16th and 17th, received it three weeks ago. You know what I mean?
Got you.
So that's, that's the other thing. So we don't hear about it. How, how can we hear about?
I understand. Well, first thing, I can connect you with the people who came and did the neighborhood workshop, because they're coming back to do another one. So, so we got that. And that really isn't sitting in, but that's just something we're providing to help people get their affairs in order.
What was the name?
It was the Levin Farm who did it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a community program.
It was a community program, so they're coming back.
Check out the people to get that done, but they turned it over to Levin.
Okay, then Ms. Mary gonna do it.
Okay.
Yeah, if we can get more lights in, in the neighborhoods, you know, this is the darkest city, you know, coming from a city of Houston and other places and coming here, I mean, it's crazy. There's no lights. It's, you know, it's, it's bad. It's dark.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. So the city, the city got out together.
Uneven sidewalks. We have, you know, sidewalks all broke up. And I fell over here across the cemetery. I fell, and I was jogging and fell, tripped over, right across the street from the cemetery, where they're building that new building, and skinned my leg. But I'm telling you, there was uneven sidewalk. We need to do that, and we also need sidewalks in our area.
Well, what's really helpful in all these things like sidewalks, streetlights, we're happy to address those. We do, we do that across the city and do the best that we can. FPL owns some lights. We own some lights. It's a little bit of a hodgepodge. I couldn't tell you if the one right out here is owned by FPL or the city. We could look it up. I just couldn't tell you offhand. So what, anytime, and that's for anybody in here, if there's a sidewalk issue, a streetlight issue, the easiest thing to do is just let us know so we can go check on it. But if we just say a whole neighborhood, it's kind of hard to check on, you know, so if you'll let us know.
I talked with Ten Yadi. I told her at the council meeting several times.
Well, an even better opportunity tonight, you've got folks that will ensure, yeah.
Yeah, I want to say this to Ten Yadi. You know, when you first got together here, you said, well, you know, most of the African-American did not vote for you, but we did vote for you.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
We did vote. You said it earlier. You said.
No, that's not what I said.
So I didn't get no votes from the Africans.
No, y'all heard me wrong.
No, she was talking about geography, you know, because she got a new district. That's what she was saying.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
No, I say, the people that were in the, oh, did you say you loved me though? That's what you just said. But, no, I got the East Side. The East Side didn't vote for me because you weren't a part of District 5. That's what I was saying.
Yeah. Okay. So, all right. So.
Because I need y'all to see me. Because I talked to you at the last time home meeting when you were running for mayor. And I talked to you when you came to one of our meetings. And all the reason I'm up here begging here and pleading, because I have children, and there's other children in the neighborhood, because we have a lot of kids in this neighborhood. His kids cross Blunt Street and all the other streets y'all talking about. And somebody told me they was gonna at least try to come paint some parking lines to slow down the traffic, because y'all done came and clocked many times on this little part of Blunt right here. People doing nine-and-nine. I could hear them biscuits up and down my street. And them babies be trying to cross the street just to come to this center. And I had to, I stand up there and watched them, while those people, we didn't have accidents all day. On Blunt Street, one is seven, Blunt is Davis. I don't want no kid to get hurt. I just see a bunch of people. Every time, I'm running outside trying to see if those people okay. One of the cars could end up in my yard almost, but he hit my neighbor here, Mr. Ellis, gate, because they fly up and down the streets. That's all I'm asking for.
No, I remember that conversation. I think, I think something just happened with you like a couple of days before that, when I saw you at Jaffe James, if I remember right. So, yes, same thing. We'll add that to, for public works or whatever. Understand stop signs, speed bumps, repainting lines. It's not something we can just decide to do tomorrow. There's studies, because there's legal ramifications when those are cities, streets that we maintain. So if, if the mayor wants a stop sign somewhere, they don't, you can't just put a stop sign somewhere. You gotta show that, you know, that it has merit. And I believe you. I've been on that street, so I'm not saying.
Another thing, I'll be quick.
Yeah.
Set attention, man. I forgot your name, Mr. Crenshaw. Thanks for coming out and fixing some stuff when it was acting crazy. But I know FPL is over the power lines, but it makes their job hard to get our trash, because I can't help that my house sits on Blunt Street, and there's power lines and stuff all over. They supposed can't even cut the tree out and then do that. I need their job to be a little easier. And also, just a suggestion, you know, if we do that neighborhood thing once a year where they can come get the heavy trash.
Neighborhood.
Maybe I should do that more than once a year, because that would help with the code enforcement, because I know code enforcement come get me because we got trash, and I can't get rid of it fast enough. Because I took over a house, my mom left me. And then, like they said, I can't really afford it either. So, but I'm trying, you know? And I work for the school district too, so I should be able to afford that.
Yeah, I, I understand. All right. Well, that's, that's a lot of questions. All right. So again, I'm trying to remember all those. So, let me talk about two-way Davis and MLK, because I agree with you. I think, two-way MLK and Davis is, is something that we talked about. Actually, three of us up here went to Chipley, which is where FDOT's district office is, to talk about this exact issue, that those are state roads, as, as was mentioned. And so what our hope is, is that, and we've made real progress, we believe we can make this happen, is that, that we get it within the work plan of FDOT to come in and bring in the millions of dollars it would take to get those roads, all the potholes, all that, get them all fixed up. And then the part of the agreement would be that we would then take possession of them once they are two-way. So, so our goal, because I agree, people are flying up and down there. They don't know which way they're going. And we have I-110 to be able to move traffic up north and south. So those are ways that we can help slow traffic down and be able to cross at MLK and Davis.
Is there an alternate plan, because making them two-way will not work especially with the park right there in the middle? So maybe, so maybe speed bumps or something like that to slow down the traffic as opposed to.
Are you talking about Blunt Street, or are you talking about?
Talking about MLK and Davis.
Okay. Well, well.
Because the two-way, I think that's signs, because that's my neighborhood.
As part of the two-way. So I mean, all of that would be, yeah.
That's not, we need a plan. We need a plan, because we have speed bumps. Yeah, the key is, we have that park. Making that a two-way in the parking, at games and things like that, that's not, that's.
Okay. Well, it was not the solution, I can tell you, because that's what, that's what the speeds think of.
But I need more signs, and I think that.
Okay. So, what's that? Oh, you, you mentioned Hollis T. Williams, but.
Yeah, this is the Latin afterword.
Yeah, okay.
We did say we wanted a two-way, you know, MLK is on, MLK is on, but look at the football field, you know, the D field, and those parking like that, you might need to look at, do another study on that, because cars, you know, parked on the side during the game. And I mean, if you have a, you know, we need a lane.
Traffic engineer, you know, that wasn't my debris. So someone along, how we can make that happen. So I just want to be clear. I mean, we could talk about that for a while. All right. So Hollis T. Williams, let me give you an update on that. This is, it's been talked about as a part of 18 city blocks, 1.3 miles, that obviously disconnected a neighborhood in a, in a business center, business core, back in the late 60s and early 70s. We all know that. What, but the reality is, this discussion about Hollis T. Williams, to your point, has been talked about since 2000, really starting with Hurricane Ivan in 2004. So in the last 18 years until this year, the last 18 years until this year, was that there was $2.35 million is all, about 1.6 million went towards the design. Yeah, come on. In the last 12 months, we've gotten $30.5 million to do the project, which is the.
You're like a park. We'll, we'll be dead by the time you build it. Thirty, what good is it going money when it never gets off the ground?
We're worried about how quick it's gotta be spent. I can guarantee you, because it's gotta be spent within. Because it's gotta be spent within 36 months, so I can guarantee it's gonna be done faster than that. So, all, all I'm telling you is, this is for the first, for the first time, we actually have opportunity to do what's been, been discussed, and there's...
My name is CJ Charles, and I, I kind of wear two hats. So I've, I've got questions and comments about two different things. First thing is what you're talking about now, the Hollis Williams Park. The initial plans for Hollis Williams Park was about 10, over 10 years ago. The Eastside was a part of that plan, okay? The administration changed, and the, the plans got shut. $250,000 was spent to get those plans. Those plans sat in Helen Gibson's office for years, okay? Then, there, there's gonna be a change. The last time, I'm assuming there was another study there, so they didn't do it for free. But, okay, now, you're talking about doing another change. Now, I'm not sure you're gonna do a, you've done a study. So how much money overall has been spent on study?
So, I don't, I can't speak to the one 10 years ago that you, that you mentioned, or, I don't know where that is. Uh, one, about five years ago, 1.6 million was spent on the current, the plan that's there as is. And what I'm telling you is that, for, for the first time, there's actually, that plan was designed with no funding to construct, right? There was, there was no funding, there was, it was, so you can make a plan, like you said, and then it sits on a shelf? Well, I can tell you why that happened, 'cause there was no money to build anything. It was the hope that we could design something and then to go procure funding. What we're saying is, this administration, our grants office, our team up here has made it a priority, and for the first time in two decades, you can say that there's $31 million to actually construct something. So, uh, so there isn't a change of plan. What it is, is that we actually, Matt, give me a second, I'm, I'm talking, I'm, let me give him the respect of, of his time. So, for the first time, we actually have consequential funding to see something happen. So, so that, that is the big difference that we're discussing here, is no one has ever been able to say that there's funding for Hollis T. Williams until the last six months.
I was hoping that you guys would bring an illustration of the, the last plans that were done, and an illustration of the changes that you want to make.
Yeah.
Let me say this, because the, one of the major concerns about Eastside is what changes are gonna occur between Jordan and Savannah Beaches? Because those are the Eastside boundaries, North and South boundaries.
Yeah.
We need to know what you're putting in there. We need to know how it will affect the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
And, and, you know, we, in the past, we've had some say-so, we're gonna have some say-so this.
Well, well, rest assured you will, because, number one, there is no new plan. So understand, so here's where we sit today.
But that changes, right, are there, are there not changes?
There are no changes that have taken place.
No, but, but that's our plan.
Let me explain it to you, so we've got one, 1.6 million dollar plan from five years ago that had no budget. We now sit with 30 and a half million dollars to construct, of which we are going to go through the exact process that you're talking about, because the community engagement and feedback wasn't good enough. So we're gonna do it again by our... Questions. We haven't asked, when we try to reconnect a lost neighborhood, what happens to the neighborhood, not just what happens in the park. So those are the questions that we haven't answered yet, as a community, as a city. So it's too, it's too early to say we have changes to a plan, we don't have any changes to a plan. We have the blessing of 30 and a half million dollars to actually see this through for the first time in 20 years. So what will happen is, we will have the most robust community engagement project that's ever happened at any park in this city, which is that when we come back and say we're reconnecting a neighborhood, that we're doing it in the way to respect the people that did and do live here. So that is by our choice, we don't have to redesign, we could take the design that was already there five years ago, and just do what was already done, but it wasn't done good enough. So, so, you know, so I, I rest assured in the next 12 months, six to 12 months, through this planning and redesign process, that, that everybody that wants to have a say and deserves to have to say in what happens, will have that opportunity.
All right, secondly, I, I'm working with the Chappy Dean Museum and Flight Academy. And approximately 12 years ago, the Eastside Association took that on as a project. We helped establish that, we've been helping develop. This is the third managerial administration that I've worked under, this has been a 12-year project for me. And, you know, we're at the point now, I think, that probably made the most, most progress on the neighborhood, I think, that you, you probably know as well as us. And, you know, I, I can understand that things move a lot slower when you're dealing with a city or a state or something like that, but when you start talking about 12 years, it's kind of ridiculous. But, okay, we're at the point now where we're gonna be building a new 1,800-square-foot building for the Flight Academy, because the Flight Academy has outgrown its presence space. Now, I can't get anybody to tell me when, when, Victoria, you might know, I don't know if you know, when are we gonna break ground? From what I understand, the bids have been in, the contractors have been selected, so when are we gonna break ground? When are we gonna start building?
Well, Victoria, give you an update.
Okay, so, um, with the Flight Academy, the, the bid was awarded, so we do have a contractor under contract. Plans are currently going through permitting, so we're kind of at the last leg before we break ground. We don't have a, no siege yet, so we don't have a firm date yet, but as soon as we have that, we will get that out.
Looking at, you know, we have holidays coming up and such. So once, once the contractor really does start to break ground and, and move forward, we're expecting like a late summer type of completion.
Late summer.
Twenty twenty-four.
Oh, 2024, sorry.
I know, I know what you're saying. Certainly wouldn't be 2023, but that...
To be done.
To be done.
To be complete, correct.
That's the last question.
Here you go. Okay, thank you so much. All right, this is our last question we get to, we're already over on time. Is the unhoused population suggestion Jermaine Williams?
How you doing?
Hey, what's going on?
You don't have to give me an answer, you have my information. But I just moved back here from Jacksonville, Florida last week. When I left Pensacola, Florida nine years ago, I left strung out on drugs, I love an alcoholic. I was addicted to cocaine, and two weeks from now will be eight years clean.
Awesome, man. Good to hear.
So, when I went over to Jacksonville, I became a mental health professional. I addressed Secretary Harris and DCL, the managing entity on that side of Florida. But I was fortunate enough to work with St. Augustine and St. John Sheriff's Office, and me and Chief Randle has had conversations about this pretty much. What they do with the unhoused, and for those that don't know, the politically correct way is unhoused, not homeless. What they do with the unhoused is, when they come into jail, they know it's a revolving door. So what they do is try to find their last contact, and they have this big map, and then they call their last contact, that last contact where some of those people are like, "I didn't even know what he was, I was looking for him." Then they connect the dots, and then they reach out to the sheriff's office in that, that area. They have a home, they have a job set up for them, and then, you know, they keep track of them. And I'm sitting there, and I'm speaking to that, that captain that's over there, the department, and I'm like, "Wow, this, this is really working, they are getting people back connected with their family, they're getting on their feet, and they're really doing something with their lives." Now, I know what it's like, because with, with that population, I've never been homeless, but I know mental illness leads to that. 'Cause I found out what was powering my addiction was my bipolar to intermittent dyspnea disorder and PTSD. It, mental illness, I was self-medicating through the drugs and alcohol. So even my first three years of sobriety, I still was acting like I was on drugs, 'cause my mental health was not in order. So these are the things, when we see these, those people out on the street panhandling, you know, nowhere to go, they're citizens just like us. Even though I've done all these great things with my life, and I'm still building, I was one or two decisions away from being them. Imagine what they could do, and I want to offer my service to anything I could do to help them.
That's very kind of you, thank you. And I just want to say, obviously, I can be very divisive, and people get a lot of opinions, some informed, maybe some not so informed. There, I very much, I very much appreciate, you know, when you see someone willing to, you know, provide solutions, who's been there and has perspective, certainly, we would love to be able to lean on that insight, so thank you. Yeah. So thank you. If you have any follow-ups, address, like, you've got some addresses for us to check on, we can do that before we head out of here, and again, thank you guys so much for being here tonight.
Hey, you all, so we do have food for you, Tommy just leave, Tommy leave already, Tommy from East King's Corner. So there's Caribbean food, maybe I'll bring yours.
Thanks for being here, appreciate it.
So make sure you go eat, make you all come out.
I also want to let you know, I know you're busy, but hurry and ask, and I wake up more check, and there's a big shout-out.
So luckily, luckily, the costume will kind of do. He was inside two years away from being a little townie, being fiends, it's about to get a skin tone. Because of the situation, we don't take care of the stuff that we have, so we're, we're just, absolutely, so we're gonna do the same thing and try to, to keep it up.
I wish y'all could have came here Monday. They called me last, when they started.
Oh, that wasn't a good idea.
So you may not be able to cover it. Ben, I'm trying to make that just started? He's upset, he's prepared, I started a separate department, I hired a dude, so they'll start in a couple weeks, but they're only starting to be... Yeah, I can help, uh, keep it up. Well, I'm, I'm happy to come up with that, those things that we could do, those, I mean, it's not those capital fixes, things that just been the block, I will, I, I personally have to take it.
Johnny, hey, Shannon.
I mean, I see all those houses, you know, some of them look like...
Okay, you know what, the Peacock House, I bought that, now it's a refund, y'all gotta eat it. Um, you know what, the Peacock House, that blue house, okay, you know, this mortgage is that, I was just finding it. That, that house was a big, and they need to be painted, those people are, those people are empty, right? The community's all in it, I...
About the church?
Mister, Mister...
Or is it something else?
Mister, what's wrong?
I remember how that said it.
Instead of letting people rent this house, we totally go outside.
This is about what's going on, what's happening on the town?
No, I mean, what's happening is...